Chair of the independent inquiry into the Sheffield Street Tree dispute. Thanks for joining us again. Could you please tell us your name and your role?
Hi, my name's councillor Teddy Foxon, I'm the leader of Sheffield City Council.
Thank you so much for joining us today. I know there's a major incident in the city and I really appreciate your coming to talk to me notwithstanding that. A couple of process points, this is being recorded and will be made available for people to see afterwards, you understand that, I think. And we also have to be careful, as I think you're also aware, not accidentally to defame or libel anyone or bring into the public domain information that should be kept, personal information, I think you understand that as well. So, would you like to say anything you'd like to say for a way of introductory remarks? And then we'll get into the list of topics we've just, I've sent you.
So first of all, thank you Mark and the team for taking this on, first of all. I'd first like just to say apologies that I am before and we have a major incident ongoing in the city. And I'm not expecting a phone call, we've got our staff deployed, but if, in case we do, it's there. I would like to start by saying that as leader and with the chief exec, along with fellow councillors and staff of this organisation, we are custodians of this organisation. But I am acutely aware that the book stops with myself and the chief exec on behaviour, standards and values of the organisation. And on that issue, you know, I want to reiterate the apology that we've already given and notwithstanding the findings within the report. So I'd just like to start off with that, that any distress and distraught calls for any individual, staff, activists or whoever, just to put our apologies on record, Mark, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Is there anything else you want to say for a way of introduction? Or could I ask you just to remind me of the roles and the positions you've held in the council since 2002?
So first of all, I was elected in 2002 in the old ward of Healy, which actually takes in part of Greedless Valley down into Healy Green, Mearsbrook, Mearsbrook Road, the park and up on Chesfield Road to Woodseas. That changed in 2004 to Greedless Valley. Then I lost my seat in 2008, which really is a value, I think, of local elections every year. Because every year people get an opportunity to express satisfaction or dissatisfaction with depending how the local issues are doing. Which is different to some authorities who have four yearly elections and within the government that set out their five yearly elections. So within this city, you know, I'm quite proud that we've got a yearly election and that local democracy speaks. And it spoke in 2008 and I lost my seat. I was re-elected then in 2010 for Manor Castle Ward. Within that time, within the council and I've been up until now, so within my roles, I've been cabinet member for transport, I was also on South Yorkshire Fire Authority as a spokesperson on there. Then when I came back on in 2015, I was the cabinet member for responsibility of transport and the environment. Up until 2016, then my wife was elected as Lord Mayor. And so we had a year touring the city, which was a total divorce really from every day going on within the organisation. And then September 2019, I was elected deputy leader of the council. And in May 2021, unexpectedly, our leader lost his seat and I was very proud to take on that role as leader of the Sheffield City Council.
Great, thank you. Now, I wanted next just to ask you if you could just remind us why you wanted the inquiry? And I've heard you express a view about the importance of, well, the need really to lift the cover of the dispute. And just to ask you to say a word or two about that.
Yes, thanks, thanks very much. So kind of my terminology is, you know, I wanted us to come from under the blanket and really have an opportunity. All my ethos has always said, I like everybody to hear the same conversation. People may never understand or agree with the decision you've made, but if people understand how you've got to that decision, then at least if they form a different but they know how we've got there and why as decision makers we've got to where we are. And I always think that, you know, to know where you're going, you've got to know where you've come from. And in this world, I were moved and became leader in May 2021 in a totally different environment of being a cooperative council. And we drew up an agreement with our comrades in the Green Party as well, so we made that. And part of that, I wanted to really kind of close this chapter and move on going forward and the truth and exhilaration. But also I wanted everybody to have the opportunity to have their say. Rather than this, what I felt was, over time, people divorced themselves from dialogue and took that action and the issues that we got into ourselves. But that's why I thought a real opportunity now to get ourselves to listen to, bring something in again, independent, I'm sure we've discussed that later. To have a look in and give us some recommendations about that. And just on that, with that kind of fresh start that we were moving on, we've just had a peer review, so we've had our local government association first time in over a decade. So I really feel that, you know, getting that opportunity to have a really fresh look of where we are and get this truth and regulation, but also listening to what everybody has had to say. Because I've heard a number of the sessions that you've had where things have come out to me as well. So it's really kind of fulfilling and it's helped me with some of that, but really to get to that next chapter.
Okay, thank you. And that sort of leads me on really to something I've heard you also speak about, which is your vision for how the council engages its residents' hearts and minds. I wanted you just to say a word about that.
As a Sheffielders born and bred here, obviously, you know, we have terms of praise and grumble and we have the issues of who you think you are, don't know what stepped him out, where you're coming from. And that, you know, the opportunities that, and what is really great about the city is that in parts, some parts of the city, people can get organised very quickly on issues that really matter to them. And in some parts of the city, very lone voices etcetera. And that's why we have elected members as well to speak on behalf of that. And I always use this doc from the man who, you know, how do I give doc on a man? The opportunity to have her say on influencing where she lives, works and plays. And so for me, it was always about this, how do we get into the hearts and minds and get residents to really have an opportunity? And at the heart of my decision making, I have a triple lock. I have people, I have places and I have planning. And all of that kind of really forces that decision making. So for me, when I became leader, I kind of implemented what I do as a local councillor. So we went and go on walkabouts, so we took the teams around, walkabouts around all the areas, meeting fantastic volunteers, residents, local organisations, just getting to, really getting to the nitty gritty of what they expect and this expectation from the council. After what was, you know, a really bitter time for us, but a real opportunity to get out now and rebuild it. But also to listen to what they've said, not us telling them, listen. And I really want to embed what residents and communities want to do. So turning this ship around into our local delivery model, we'll now come into that more. Was a real opportunity for us to give Sheffielders right across this city a voice.
Right, and so you had the big conversation, you've put in place these local area committees. Tell us, tell me a bit about the role of these initiatives in basically supporting what you've just said about the council's desire, if I've understood you, to be more open, to encourage dialogue, to engage the residents directly?
So when I became deputy leader, again, you know, I wanted us to come from under the blanket really. This kind of decentralise it in, and that was forced upon us by austerity and all the issues that were going. So I don't, you know, I'm not trying to decry that. But the issue was that we, for a number of reasons, didn't really have vehicles in our community to deliver in the respects of the severity. And certainly my politics was always community and how do we develop more power down? And really kind of, well, it's on the bag, so I'll say, you know, how do we enable, how do we empower and how do we engage our communities? And that were a big thrust when we were developing the local area committees. And that came from conversations of going right around this city, talking to over 4,000 people. Me and the previous leader, you know, we went on the tram, we were just sat with people on the tram, just going about their daily just listening to what they'd got to tell us. And the passion that they had, the enthusiasm about where they live, where they work, where they play and what was actually in their original view and also about delivery of services. Because austerity had meant that for a number of reasons, we'd had to come back on stuff that we really wanted to deliver on. Which obviously, making a political point, this government just don't get. But the issues were that, but to capture that and to get it into a structured way of divining how we go forward with that. And so we set up the big city conversation, we went around all sides and it was quite clear, you know, there were some common denominators that were coming back to us. And one of them was, you know, everybody thought that we were not doing enough in their area. And they wanted, that if you want, they wanted the tools to get on with the job. And, you know, on our walkabouts that followed that, you know, we really kind of beefed up on that. You know, some groups were there and willing to share their learnings and skills and what they'd delivered in one area, it's transferable. And we're on with trying to move that ahead. And so that moved us on to our first step on this journey. So soon as I became leader, we set up the local area committees. And that is a way of getting back into our communities, giving our communities a real voice and opportunity to meet us as elected members. And also, how do we give them, and there's just this year alone, we've all launched the local community plans developed by the community and by elected members. So it's a real opportunity for everybody to have buy-in to where they live. And also to tell us, why don't they choose to live in those areas? Why, you know, what drives them into them parts of the city? And so that's what's done, so that's the first step of a really big challenge for us. And myself and Kieran, the chief exec, constantly talk about this, how we kind of get further and what's our next steps. And, you know, thankfully, most councillors buy into this. And so we look at how we kind of develop further down. And as I say, you know, a lot of the stuff since I came in 2021 is not reflective now of how we governed before. We're now into a committee system. We've now got our local area committees that has its own autonomy as well. So we've got, we've got a real opportunity to move forward. And so it's, a lot of this now is about how we collegically get agreements to move it. So that's what the 2019 Big City Conversation helped us inform. We're now working on policies to get, to deliver a lot of what the people of Sheffield have told us.
Okay, very good, thank you. So I'm going to get us in now to some of the issues that, as you know, I'm looking into in terms of the dispute. So can you maybe just start by telling me, when you first learned about objections, if you like, to the tree replacement elements of the Streets Ahead contract? And started to, you know, form the view, actually, this is a bit of an issue for us?
I can actually, and I remember the meeting very well. So we'd just come in 2015, so it was May 2015, we'd just come back after the elections. And we'd been around this city, door knocking, talking to many residents. And really, people was kind of, certainly for me, we're talking about that we'd just delivered the Tour de France in Sheffield on our new roads, we'd got the streets ahead. People were quite point about that, you know, that, you know, years ago, Potters City, there'd have been that many puncture outfits, punctures and you know, how we delivered this. And I always remember, you know, watching the Tour de France on all of that around the city. The issue, and of course, none of that was flagged and there were very little. And we were very successful in the 2015 election coming back and Streets Ahead was a flagship of ours. And I think we were about three into that. And within, probably a couple of weeks of taking charge of the cabinet and getting briefed. And I remember at that time, we'd got a large issue, as always, with the buses. And the buses were going through a major overhaul, we were changing numbers of buses and everything else, so there were a big. And I had a meeting with residents from Ruslin's Road. And I went to see them, I think it was an evening meeting. And I was hearing about all this opposition to the proposed works on Ruslin's Road. It was quite a shock bearing in mind, really for three years, we'd delivered and delivered at pace in some respects on some of the issues. And, you know, a very kind of eloquent way of putting their arguments over, very kind of considerate way of looking. And I kind of left that meeting thinking, well, how more of this is there to do? Bearing in mind, just being briefed that we'd got the core investment period to do, there were a number of replacements of trees. I'm just thinking, wow, wow. So I went away to kind of look at that. And over, very quickly over a number of days, found out that there were various issues, pockets of issues around the city. And so then, yeah, just sat back for a minute and thought, you know, what are the real issues? Where do we look at that? And then things escalated and then things moved at a very swift pace really.
Okay, so I guess it was from that experience of finding out there were some significant issues which hadn't come to your attention really, that you started in the process which led to the creation of the Highway Trees Advisory Forum?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So I think, on the timeline, just doing a bit, I think we'd got the Ruslin's Road petition, I think, at some stage. And up until that point, there were groups of activists on various parts. I don't think at that time Stag was formed as well, or he wasn't a creative voice. And at that time, I'd been briefed as a layman, as an absolute layman, no real background at all. I mean, 30 years as a miner, my view was mining, an X tree if you want, in that respect. So no real kind of issues or expertise in any of that. People talking to me about the 60s, talking to me about this is the last resort, we don't replace this cabinet member and all of that sort of stuff. Which for a number of times then we were getting public questions at council and that. And I'm standing up relating that, rehearsing really, what officers have, this is where we are. No contract lawyer at all in this respect. But then, and I just gauged this feeling that, you know, at this particular time then, I think tree walks had been suspended, road shows had moved away. As I say, and at that time, we'd got no other vehicle in our communities of big people able to raise with us or for us to pick up intelligence, except for coming to full council and raising their issues. And along that way, and I just thought, well, coming back to my earlier point, everybody hearing the same conversation was, I thought if we set up a couple of forums where we could explore. Because in them early days, and I think you may have seen the slides about, that were presented about, that there were engineering solutions that are considered before. And that's where these engineering solutions, and I, as it says, not as an expert, I couldn't relate that. So then got officers and Amy and some experts to come in and write them, give me the view. So you all hearing what I'm hearing across this table. And that's where we got to at that moment in time.
Okay, so you set up the forum, it had two meetings, the second meeting was problematic. And it, you know, my understanding is, you sort of formed the view, actually, this forum isn't working the way you wanted it to. And so you developed, got advice, I suppose, from officers on a different strategy, which was to set up the independent tree panel. Could you tell me what was in, what you hoped it would achieve, the independent tree panel?
So, as I say, everything's happening at pace here. And the second tree forum was, again, I'm not saying delivered what we wanted it to deliver. But I didn't feel that people were able, enough people were able to express their own opinions. And really, the squeaky wheel were getting all the grease, in my view. And I wanted to have that wider view of what people were telling me. I'd also got local councillors in those areas who'd got concerns that the process was moving into those areas. They, how can I influence this? Why can I get on? So, and vice versa with some residents etcetera, and also the activists who were, you know, were not. And some were, you know, very informed, as you heard, experts etcetera in their field. So at that particular time, we'd got a contract with not much riddle room. But you could see what was happening at the time because it wasn't long before somebody could stand in a next door nearby and go on and you're not going to, work suspended. And we got hundreds of these coming down the road. And so it only took one, oh, something's got to happen and we've got to get into some dialogue here because otherwise we're going to really. So my view of all of that was, right then, I've got officers telling me, these are the ones that have been identified. I've got Amy who was saying, well, your officer's telling us there's no riddle room in this contract. We're removing as a last resort. There's engineering solutions that have been floated around. And I thought, well, the way here is, I think, we need to listen, everybody needs to listen to this one, but also everybody needs a voice in this. And so we'll, and part of that was setting the bar, you know, we set that bar really low for the panel to take a look at. And that was a conscious decision, really conscious, you know, to have a look at this. So that we got that, that challenge along the way. And so devised with officers, said, right, how can we get this up? And I really thought that there were a real opportunity there, this was an independent panel, going to have a look at the, you know, the decisions. So this weren't really, and I really don't want to be derogatory, you know, people are really concerned about, you know, I'm really clear that, you know, a really old tree being replaced by a new tree about, is not the same. And I really don't get that, but I do get that to get a really big tree, somebody planted new trees years ago. So I really get that point, but, you know, we were working in people's neighbourhoods, where people live, work, play. So let's get an independent view of that and let's see how that, and also get that dialogue going that's saying, right, you know, you've taught me, you've had the answer, I've given you the answer that you've heard. Here we are, we've got an independent panel and we'll get challenged out. And I think, I don't know the numbers, but I mean, that all came after I left, but I think it was 70% agreed, 30%. But we always knew there were going to be some, you know, to get 100% agreement. So there were always going to be that, right then. So then what's the issue is then as getting all of that independent advice is then the challenge that comes back to have that difficulty conversation. Because at the time, you know, without being derogatory, we had the deputy prime minister in the city. And this contract was a three-way issue here. We'd got the government, we'd got the council, we'd got a global company. So if anybody were going to try and make any pressure, but give us the information, give us the evidence that we can really kind of move forward with, that if there are real issues on there. So that was my thinking about that, get that evidence from the panel. Then get back into the challenge of, right, why is this? And really give me the evidence to get challenging back. And what were the costs of these engineering solutions that everybody had heard? Because we'd heard them in the forum. So that's where we got to. So that was my thinking. And there was this view, not my view, but there is this view that not everybody was being heard, they're having the opportunity. So that was one of the reasons about, let's get on every street then, let's, we're affecting everybody's area where they live. And let's see whether that is to our process.
So the next thing I want to ask you is this, and let me start by saying, I know that from May 2016, as you've already described, you were no longer responsible. But what you've described is a desire to set up an independent panel. And I think it would be reasonable for people to expect that the recommendations of the panel will be taken seriously. And there's a bit of an implication that if a council sets up an independent group, it's sort of incumbent on the council really to follow quite closely, where at all possible, the recommendations that the panel comes forward with. And as you know, Andy Buck came for a chat with me about that. And I just wonder if you would agree that it became a bit problematic actually to have set up this panel with very credible people, for them to do their work. And then in a substantial number of cases where the panel recommended retaining the tree, the council decided not to retain the tree. Would you accept that that had kind of consequences for public trust and confidence and so on?
Absolutely, I've no doubt about that in my, not just because I said it up or gave it political seriousness, but I really think that were an opportunity. One of the things here was, we were always going to have to get to a point through dialogue. That we don't, you know, as I said before, only took one person to stand, this were an health and safety issue, really heavy work etcetera. And suddenly come from a heavy industry, you know, there were health and safety implications in this. So I thought there was a real opportunity. And again, there's always that issue about lifting people's expectations on here. But I think you have to take into the consideration, it's again, you know, we are just trying to allay this, you know. If you'd have come, if you'd have come to the council in, let's say, September, we could have said that, you know, we were going to deliver X, Y and Z. And then we had 12 weeks of chaos, that the world just went upside down and we went through that. And the way that the markets fell and the interest rates, but suddenly they had to make a different decision. So I understand events say that, and at that time, I think by the time the panel were meeting, that there were, the government, you'll have to have a look at the government settlement, was again even tighter. We were in the deep throes of austerity, so there was that, there was that pressure on. So I understand about that pressure. But I do, I do feel that, you know, once those, and bear in mind, we'd just been at the High Court, we'd just come from the High Court. We'd had a period of injunction where we kind of paused in that, about why all of that was going on. So yeah, you know, I knew there was going to be hard, prickly, difficult conversations to be had. But the whole idea of having something independent and probably whatever your report might say independent, then the expectation is that, you know, we would act upon them findings or have a really good reason why you couldn't. But yeah, you know, and I've heard areas about scenario planning and all of that. But anybody who thought that we were actually going to, you know, I'd have to replay that back in my mind. Somebody who thought we were going to put that many amount of trees into a panel and you were going to get 100% acceptability then, no, I, you know, I kind of can't see that point, but anyway.
Okay, okay, I understand. Now, you then sort of moved to do other things for a while and weren't engaged or didn't have the same direct responsibility after May 2016. But I want just to ask you if you could just describe for me your experience really of the division of responsibility between elected councillors and officers in the delivery of the Streets Ahead programme. And you touched on it earlier, but just explain to me the reliance you placed on advice from officers and what you thought it was, if you like, it was the sort of officers' responsibility to give to the members?
So I suppose for myself personally as a decision maker, there are various steps that you go through to make that decision. And one of it is obviously gauging evidence or options that you're able to do. It's quite clear that, you know, obviously the administration sets the policy, we expect the officers then to carry out that or to give you reasons and options of how you're going to deliver that or the reason why there's no way, there's no way councillor Foxon are going to deliver that. But it may not be as expedient as you think it's going to be because of. But before we get to that point, there's a number of options that people have got to be given. And we relied totally on, you know, our officers. And, you know, we've got some really good officers who will give you those opinions and options along the way. And bearing in mind, and I will touch this later on, but bearing in mind, once we don't tie ourselves into some of these long-term contracts, you know, giving us either the trap doors or be the flexibility to operate in that. And that's why, you know, we have, you know, our legal teams etcetera to give us that advice. We can only then gather that information and then make decisions. And try and not get, you know, boxed in by a lot of the issues. And on the Streets Ahead, being such a massive, I understand it was one of the biggest contracts of its time. Being in there, you know, that, you know, didn't give us the riddle room. And in these periods of austerity, you know, as I said, we'd got the And in these periods of austerity, you know, as I said, we've got the bus change, we're massive issues in everybody's portfolios. And, you know, big pressure on social services on our schools etcetera. Trying to find, trying to find those savings, those efficiencies when you're tied into that. So, you know, that's where we expect that advice to come from. And if there are issues, then, you know, how do we develop them opportunities to move on? So, yeah, you know, as, as, as local members, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I live in my community. I eat in my community, I drink in my community, you know, and that's where we come from. We're very privileged people to be elected to a position that I'm able to have, you know, conversations with Kate as Chief Executive, with Kate and Ashman as Executive Director at that level that other members of the public can't yet have to get those experience and learn information to us. So to be able, as councillors, to make that decision. And then obviously we get briefed at Labour Group. They come and inform us about, you know, maybe developing a strategy and what that may mean, what he puts his onto that. And then, you know, the options are there on the table, A, B and C, like you just said. And it's up to the politicians then to decide.
Yeah. So I do want to ask you one follow-up thing on that because I'm not sure if you now are used to it. But James Henderson told me last week in one of these discussions that he felt that you had been asking for options basically, for finding a solution of officers in the highways team back in sort of late 2015, early 2016. And what James basically said to me was, he didn't think that you got very good quality stuff coming back to you. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to offer any comment you want to offer on that.
I think, I think in that, bearing in mind the time we'd got, I mean, I think I said to you, you know, we'd got people being, conversations taken, people were very reluctant on what they were conversating, you know, what advice was being given, where it was being given etcetera. So there were a number of issues that were going on. And, you know, hopefully we turn into this really kind of open transparency, which is one of our core values, moving forward in that. So the options were coming on, but you only get given what you get given. And I'm sure you'll come on and say about one of your listeners learned. And I'm sure, I'm sure maybe Kate will follows me will say that I'm probably more robust in the challenge of what information you're given. And that's a period that we all live from. And so, you know, I get James's view when I heard James's interview with that. But you only know what you know.
Yeah.
And if they're the only options that are on the table. And, you know, I really want, I really honestly believe that the only way you're going to deal with this is the one was through dialogue. And that was the only issue. And I mean, we'll talk further on about the partnership where we are with that. But the issue on here was to move this forward and not to have them financial concerns, which, you know, I mean, I mean, some people, certainly in the cabinet, you know, and they're having to make some horrendous decisions affecting lots of people's lives in that budget constraint as well. And so, you know, to get to that point, you know, balancing off one against the other was a really, really kind of hard and intense, an intense time for everybody in the council. So, you know, I understand where James has come, but we only know as laypeople. We get what we get.
Okay, now look, I understand that. So I want to move forward now because now you have a different set of responsibilities. And you touched just now on the Street Tree Partnership. I just want to ask you for your view of that. And the support the partnership gets from the council and Amy to ensure it's as effective basically as it can be.
It's, this is going to sound a very loose answer more, but this is the world we're in now. So the strong leaders has gone in the respect. So a lot of these decisions in the partnership is covered by different committees. So the committees will have that, will have that full overview. I get a briefing of kind of really high level of what's going on and going through. So regarding the resources, the questions and the updates I get is, are we going with the partnership? Is there any real issues on the partnership, you know? Are the partnership wanting anything else? Or because my understanding is, we really want to make that as independent as we possibly could. And a number of cabinet members had worked with that up until going to committee stage. So for myself, again, coming back to the old Sheffielders praise of grumble, if I don't hear, I take it there, everything's going all right. And there's enough people out there that would let me know if we'd got a problem with the partnership. And over, certainly over a couple of years, you know, they've done a sterling job in regarding of the, you know, UK top cities of that etcetera. And the partnership's been kind of noted, hasn't it, as exemplar in some respects? So it is moving in the right. So for me, I get a very high level, everything's going all right. And to be honest, we've been a committee system now. I'm sure somebody would let me know straight away if there was issues within all.
Okay, very good. Now, you won't have heard it, but Nathan, who's the Chair of the Partnership, came for a chat with me earlier today. And what I've heard from you is you basically want the partnership to be effective. And what Nathan said to me was, it may be the partnership needs a bit more help.
Right, good.
And so I suppose my question to you is, just to confirm, that you're open to sort of requests or a dialogue with the partnership if they think there are things that need to happen to be more effective in what you want them to do?
Absolutely, there's still a long way to run on this, this contract. And, you know, I'm acutely aware, there's roads we've got to get into. There are some more real difficult situations, anything that, you know, if Nathan, and it may have raised it through other officers. I think the one thing I have picked up and maybe Nathan raised this, I didn't listen because obviously I was doing some revision on today's meeting. But, you know, I think, I think Nicky, Nicky Rees is assisting or working with them. And I think Nicky's time is shared.
Right.
So I don't know whether they want more officers, I don't know what, or if it's different resources or anything. But I think I've heard somewhere around that and I think we've got to have a look at that if that is, if that is a real issue. Because I know certainly on Sheldon Roads coming up and others. And if there is more help and assistance required, yes, I'm, you know, I'm committed to this. We need to get it right. It's a long term to run on this contract and, you know, the whole ethos here is that we're all trying to get it sorted and over the line.
Yeah, okay, great. So let's just stand back and reflect on everything that's happened. And just a few questions really to give you a chance, give me your perspective. And I mean, the first one is, let's take advantage of the benefit of hindsight, which none of us have at the time. But in this kind of process we do. And just to ask you, if you have views on what might have been done differently by who and when?
Well, I think, I think my first kind of point on this as somebody who's 20 years now in this game is, and going through 12 years of austerity and still not finished, is that some of those big contracts tie you in with very little riddle room for savings etcetera. And not being, not being a contract lawyer in any shape or form. I mean, I would, I would wonder with hindsight, with all those people that were in there, would they have designed that contract the way that it was and the way that that would have worked without having some flexibility in there? And also the opportunity for, for different ways of working in that. And, you know, I heard Dan Buck from Amy, when he was working with Amy a lot of time for that, say about, you know, some of those issues in a contracting sphere. So I wonder whether at that very early stage it was... And that certainly, if you ask officers now about my kind of approach to long-term contracts, you know, I mean, I've just called one in and stopped one from going out because I want to be absolutely clear that the business case and that it gives us those opportunities for the run we want. So that's, that's a clear steer on that. The others, you know, within the contract is, you know, where, you know, it started out with, you know, fantastic for the community, stewards we've got out there, we had to walk about the trees. But I don't think there were much in it about conflict. And whether what, you know, for us who were designing that, this was a really, really good news story. To be brutally honest, it was a really... And one of the big issues for me, who'd been in transport previously, was being able to, the street lights that were on the courty edge would actually move further back so you got more of an impact on it. There was an opportunity, I'd spoke to a number of motorrad organisations that talked to me about when driving certain vehicles and bikes and a clear lines, clear, clear, you know, you're not looking here, you're not looking forward to steering, clear, clear curb, curbside lines and all. There were real opportunities to address that. And something that's a real bugbear for a lot of, lot of people, sound like silver black, they don't know a lot of them, gas verges. You know, it's a real passion in Sheffield about people with a gas vage, we had an opportunity to kind of address a lot of that stuff. So and then obviously, you know, the replacements of trees in some, and, you know, I think on a number of roads, some had come down with storm damage and, you know, we were going to replace along the way. So on all of that, but nothing in there thought that, you know, about some of this conflict stuff. So I think there's an issue on there. And then obviously I think mediation was an issue as well, you know, where do we go with this then?
Right.
And we had to try and mediate. So that, I think, I think there were a couple of issues within that.
Okay.
But for us as a council, that flexibility was crucial, I think.
Yeah, okay. Now, the contract's got another 15 years to run, as you know. And I just wonder, because one of the things in my terms of reference is to just look at whether there's any future risks or danger of problems reemerging. I wonder if there's anything that's on your mind that you'd like me to bear in mind as I think about that issue?
Well, again, I mean, we don't know when austerity's going to end now. And in this city, we've got really high inequality. So we've got to address a lot of those issues. And, you know, nearly £500 million took out of this council budget. You know, it's, you cannot express, and even the savings that we're trying to make this year are eye-watering and really testing members to the nth degree. So they're, you know, they're all a real test. And I think you've got councillor Jordan coming in, who's obviously with the streets in. And Joe probably told you all the challenges he has with trying to make savings in his, he's got two, two big contracts. The big issues on that is what we've got to be able to do. And hopefully, who's manoeuvring and turning this big oil tank around into that and really neighbourhood, local delivery model, which tells you, which are really passionate. And hopefully the likes will be able to pick up a lot of those issues very early on that we could address, that, you know, without them developing over time, we can address it very early on. We, you know, we're moving, we're moving to this local delivery model, hoping to pick up that intelligence. But also having an open dialogue at the moment, hopefully, you know, people have come and have heard a lot of it. But they've had the opportunity now to have that conversation. And I hope that it does help us moving on to that next chapter of going forward. So there are risks. I hope that we identify them early enough to deal with them so they don't become the major issues that develops. And that we can kind of move on at a pace and get this, get this sort of for the benefit of everybody in the city really.
Yeah, okay. So two last things. Firstly, could you tell me what impact you think the dispute had on the council? And secondly, anything you can tell me about lessons that have been learned so far?
Impacts on the council? I think, you know, we're a public organisation. So falling out, we are public, is going to give us a massive impact. And that, obviously, I've apologised at the start of the meeting about that. So it was an impact and it did have a real kind of consequences on members, on staff within the organisation. Not discounted among the activists and residents along the way. It has held us back into it. It has been a bit of a, you know, a drag on us to get to this point. And that's again, what I said about the beginning, I think, hopefully having this inquiry can actually close that chapter on that. It never satisfy everybody, I understand that, I totally get that. But at least if people have listened to a wide range of people and how we've got to where we got to and how we want to move forward. But also it's affected how we've kind of operated as well. And for me, as I say, keep turning this back to the neighbourhood's delivery and a real local delivery model has to be the way to, you know, getting them hearts and minds and giving everybody an opportunity to influence us is a real, a real value for us. The, you know, and we're testing that against our local government associations peer review to make sure that that is the right way. That'll be, you know, that they'll be giving us an independent view is, you know, the challenges that we face on there. You know, we've got a brand new governance system, we're in early stages of the likes. We're really wanting to move that forward. So there's, you know, it has really impacted and, you know, we have took a real turn shift. And I'm, given to wherever I am leader, that is the direction of travel to really get into that. And, you know, as I say, I've had long conversations with Kate, the Chief Exec, on how we'd develop that and with our group and cross-party really to really get into that real issues of how we, you know, we'll move forward on that issue. So for me, that, they're a part of that. And hopefully bringing all of that together should help us move forward as an organisation. And hopefully, you know, we've lost a lot of staff through this issue. And obviously, you know, we need to learn. And again, your lessons learned on that issue is, if we only learn lessons about this incident, then it's not going to take us very far, there are some wider ranging. And I think I've already said to you, one of the, one of the things I've learnt is I've, you know, we've called for review, one of the big contracts that we were looking at to re-examine, make sure that's the right thing to do. You know, are we using all the principles that we believe, you know, have been identified? Just listening to yourselves, but also waiting for yourselves to give us that report. And then we'll pick up obviously the issues that you highlight for us as well. So, you know, there's a real period of learning. I don't want to, personally, I've got the scars on the back on a lot of this stuff. And I really want to, you know, use that experience that we've gained. I don't want to go into anything like this again. And I'm sure that everybody involved in this doesn't want to go in into this again. And we just need to make sure that we put policies and procedures in place that that don't happen again. And so, you know, we are moving, we've got our core values, values developed by our staff. You know, putting people at the heart of this, you know, opening us and transparence, delivering altogether. You know, they're real crucial issues about all of this. So that's what we, we want to move on and move forward. But, you know, we'll take on board what you've said as well.
Well, look, thank you. That was very, very clear. Completely, I completely understand everything you've just said at the end there. And I do think it's important what you've just said. That gets us to the end actually of the topics I wanted to discuss with you. But is there anything else you'd like to say before we finish? We've covered a lot of ground, we've been very concise, thank you for that. I know you've got lots of other things you need to do today, but let me give you a chance to say anything else you'd like to say.
Just quickly, I mean, for me, I mean, I was at the heart of it for a year and some at various stages. But it was how quickly things escalated, I think, for me. And how kind of that, the governance and the oversight, you know, that station. But just to, just to put the pressure that, you know, what every one of us must have been going through, everyone. And I'm not, that's not just in my organisation, in our organisation or wider field. But, you know, the pressure that everybody must have been under to do that and the different types of constraints, you know. I think it took this inquiry to flesh that out about all the conflicting pressures that were going on with so many people on so many levels. So I can only reiterate what I said at the beginning about that. And that we just need to get this chapter done and move, and move forward and move forward together. So that's it. And I'm really kind of really glad on you and the team for what you're doing, Mark.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much indeed. Charles, we can stop the recording.